I'd like to call our meeting here to order, here for the Cadillac Planning Commission, April 28th, 2025. And I'm gonna steal the mayor's line that if you are able, to please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
That was fine.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Ms. Danielle.
Shippers?
Present.
Host.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Bunts. Fosher.
Here.
Bauman.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Van Pelt.
Here.
Putman.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of this evening's agenda, again, April 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Mr. Bauman, second. Second, Mr. Van Pelt.
Putman.
Yes.
Fosher.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Now, approval, there was a quorum of us on the March 24th, 2025 meeting, because all the rest of you were on spring break or something. So I need a thing on the meeting minutes, approval.
Still moved.
Second.
Host and Rice.
Bauman.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Bunts. Shippers.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Fosher.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight for possible amendments to section 46-315 of the city zoning ordinance. Specifically, the planning commission will consider amendments regarding variations in design requirements for residential plan unit developments. Having read that, I'm turning that over to Mr. Walpus. Thank you.
Yes, for some of you, or most of you, this will seem like deja vu. It was about a year ago that we did this, and it had a sunset date, and that sunset date has come and passed. So now the added flexibility for the planning commission is gone at this point in time. We did have the North Lake Street flats, which needed to come in under the former language with the relaxation of the RPUD provision. We have probably one or two, one that we know of and two that maybe we need to have that flexibility once again. We have a large project, possibly with 250 units, which would be coming in at the end of Moser Street. More than likely, they were, they are going to need the changes to the RPUD to get their plan approved. We might possibly also need it for a small project on South Street near Family Fair, on those vacant lots next to that vacant building. I don't think there'll be large variations, but I'm sure at some modest point, they'll be needed in some way. So eyeing the projects that are coming forward, we didn't want to just begin the process to set this up again until after they apply. Hopefully, we could get ahead of it so that they could come directly in and apply under the RPUD when they're ready to move on their project. The Moser Street project, we've been working on, oh, for over a year now, working on various site designs and with different properties. And we hope that we're finally on the final properties that they're going to use and the layout that they're going to do. They submitted a concept design about, oh, three or four weeks ago. We've responded to that. We're waiting for their next version of it to come in to see if they're close to the point where they could submit for the project. But basically, what these two do are exactly the same thing. We're just back to the point of one has a sunset date and one does not. Exhibit A has the sunset dates, exhibit B does not. It doesn't, it's up to you which one you would like to do. They're identical. The only change is that one has a sunset date and the other does not. The sunset date is a year out, and the one without would, of course, would just stay that way indefinitely until something were to happen to change that. So basically, what it was needed for was to have some flexibility in the minimum lot size and the densities for the projects that came in and as well as the other design provisions. And so unless you have any questions, I guess that's all I have. The language, essentially, of the whole section stays the same. The only thing that's changing is whether it has sunset dates or it does not, and the fact that it allows variation to all the design provisions of the whole division instead of just the designed section. So that's the difference. And where they'll come into play could be possibly in setbacks, density, or site size. But that would be what would happen if they were looking for variations in those requirements.
And this is recommendation to council then for acceptance?
Yeah, to, recommendation that council approve whatever you approve here tonight, whether it be A or B, or either one with changes, whatever you'd like to do with that. Just a general update on where we are with the ordinance. We have written a grant for, I think it's about, oh, about $40,000 for a consulting firm to take the current draft of the ordinance and begin taking it through the approval process and, you know, work on the adoption process. That will include going through whatever public input process they design, making any appropriate editing changes that maybe the public input causes, and then finally to work on any final graphic needs that are needed for the ordinance. And then any work that would have to be done to work with Municode, which is the company that puts our zoning ordinance online to facilitate the movement of the ordinance online in its final fashion. So that grant has already been received from MISTDA, and I think the work has to be completed by January of next year. And the RFP for it should be going out, I would think, within the next week. And whatever Owen sets as the date for return, it'll give us some idea when that process will begin.
So the public hearing tonight is for input from?
Yes, for comment for or against either one of the options to move forward.
Which is essentially what we approved.
Yep.
It just expired.
Yes.
So looking at the two options here then, you know, one with the sunset, I think it was a year out. The work that's being done on the rezoning, the master plan, would, if we accepted or passed the one without a sunset, would that affect what's going on with the overall master plan?
No, it would not. The only additional value is if you think for some reason the new version wouldn't be, which, there's always some possibility, but not much. I mean, we're looking here at a deadline date with the grant having to be fulfilled by January, which is, you know, a few months of the sunset date. So whatever, whichever one you're comfortable with, I think it'll take care of the current need where we think that possibly these two projects may come in in the relatively near future.
So then this would, example, if we pick one that has a sunset date, then this rolls back to us a year from now, again?
Right. If someone didn't get that project in and needed it, you would have to come back and do this again.
Right.
If for some reason the new ordinance wasn't on the books.
Can I ask what the benefit of having the sunset on it? I know you all discussed this before I was here. What was the, what was the thinking to have a sunset on it?
The discussion, at least at the time, and at least from my standpoint, was it puts a pretty big loophole into that, or loophole, I hate that word, but quite a level of exceptions to some limitations that some may have counted on.
Okay.
And so, subject to the hope that the community would have a chance to have a deeper conversation about the whole ordinance, we didn't want it to leave that Mack truck hole there forever, in case it never got rewritten, or whatever the case might be.
So would the thinking be that since we are looking at finishing up the ordinance, those zoning ordinance, that would it be not as important to put a sunset on it? I mean, we've seen it operating for the year, and things seem to be going well. And that way, and it can always, once again, we can always, these things aren't there forever. If things aren't working out, you can always change them, as we do, change the zoning and the ordinances as necessary. I don't know, I'm just, I'm curious. I'm not saying that's my opinion.
Oh, yeah. My standpoint is kind of the opposite, that I like, there's too much power in the exceptions, I think. And so I'd rather have the planning commission bounded by certain limitations, except for time, and including time in this case, and either pushes for us to move forward with the zoning change, or to have to come back and reaffirm this decision, which I agree with you, I think it's done a good job, and it leads to good policy outcomes. I just would like to have to look at it every year rather than ask to change it back.
I understand.
Just my personal opinion.
And I'm not sure if it was mentioned prior, but I wanted to let you know that Laura from Foster-Swith, Leo, council, is on via Zoom. Should the board have any questions for her?
Hi, Laura.
Good evening.
Okay, that answers my question, so.
Any questions for staff before I open public hearing? Everybody happy? Perfect. At this time, I'll open the public hearing if anyone has any input. Our amendments here to the city zoning ordinance regarding variations in these RPUD designs is what this is about. If anyone's here to speak for it, against it, anything, please come forward. State your name. And seeing no one that wants to do that, we're good. So at this time, I will close public hearing. And we've already kicked some of it around up here, so. Your motion?
Would the motion be to like, would the motion be to accept exhibit A or exhibit B? Is that how the motion should be?
To go forward on the council, yes.
And to recommend to council that they-
Recommend to council that they-
They adopt whichever version you select.
Okay.
So Joe, you're thinking we should just do this year by year?
I think so.
I agree.
I agree.
That way, we can pull it back if-
Yep, right, yep.
John, question here, I'm looking at exhibit B under nine, that the second paragraph is then lined through because that versus A. So is that because of the dates?
That's the reversion clause that's Xed out, you know, crossed out there. And since that's the version without the dates, that's why that paragraph is-
Okay, so just to be clear, is it A or B that has the sunset?
A.
A has the sunset.
So A, because of the date change?
Yeah.
I had to ask Danielle what 2025, I could see the dash.
If you want the sunset, you want exhibit A.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve and recommend to the council the approval, excuse me, of exhibit A, the ordinance amendment with the sunset.
Seconded?
Support.
Support. Fosher, roll, please.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Bunts. Host.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Fosher.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle.
Sure.
We have some new business. New business A is a land division request for 1601 West Division Street, Having read that, Danielle moved into the driver's seat.
Yeah. Musical chairs over here. Thank you. So as Mr. Chair stated, we are set before you is a land division request from 1601 West Division Street. Just a little background, 1601 West Division Street is not platted. However, 417 Leeson Ave. is platted. Therefore, this request has to come before planning commission. So pictured here is an aerial of the two properties. 1601 is Temple Hill, and then 417 Leeson is in that teal blue color. So again, as stated, it's set before you due to it being located within a plat. The properties are zoned R2, meaning that the minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet with a lot width of 75. The division will result in 417 Leeson being roughly 17,000 square feet and 84 feet in width with 202 feet in depth. Pictured here, you can see the transfer parcel. So that would be the portion of 1601 West Division that would be split off and then combined with 417 Leeson. We would not want just the transfer parcel to be sitting by itself due to there not being means of access to that parcel. So that parcel will be combined with 417 should planning commission approve the split. So listed there are the new parcel descriptions. Staff comment, staff supports the division due to the transfer parcel being combined with 417 Leeson. They both meet for minimum size and width for the R2. There is a typo there, it's R2 zone district. And again, these requirements can be found in chapter 46, article 3, division 18 of the Code of Ordinances. The recommendation would be to consider approving the requested land division for property 1601 West Division and 417 Leeson Ave. Drew and Lori are here. Should the board have any questions for the property owner?
And we have final decision on this one?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yes, so should the board approve this, then the next step would be for staff to combine the property, which the property owners have already filled that out and made that kind of go hand in hand, because again, we wouldn't want this parcel to just be sitting by itself. And I did want to add to that Temple Hill has split off similar sized lots, as pictured, to other properties further south. And those are not combined with the parcels on Leeson Ave. So when I was observing that, I was, that was one of my staff recommendations, is having that parcel combined with 417.
Yeah, actually, good point, Danielle, there's, so there will be a chunk then that Temple Hill won't have access to anymore?
Behind?
No. Nope, there will be no, so I don't know if I, my aerial goes out further. So they will, it will be this section. So then they will still have all of their access here.
There's a chunk south of that, though?
This is, if this is up to date, I mean, good on the, does Temple Hill own, and this may, this may not be updated. What I'm looking at, they own really three lots deep, but that might not be updated.
No, so further south.
Yes.
Yeah, and those aren't, those are with the parcels on Leeson, but they're not combined. So you're-
Oh, so the people on Leeson own the property behind it?
Yeah, so it's the similar split to-
I see.
So we'll be reaching out to those property owners to get those combined.
So the property owners must have bought the property without combining it back together?
Right. Do you want me to go to the other?
Any questions for the folks that want to do it?
I don't have any questions.
It's like a heck of a nice backyard to me.
No doubt.
Sure does.
Yeah, and that is one of the reasons why they were asking for additional land is due to growing family and area to play.
Yep, no, makes sense.
And in Temple Hill, it's tax exempt, correct?
Correct, so this will be, yep, so this will be adding property into the tax roll.
This is your place?
Nice little block.
So she's saying this?
Just a little block.
These people don't hear.
Danielle, just looking, I'm on the equalization site on the map.
Yeah, do you want me to come over there?
Yeah, if you want to.
Leesundies.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Great place for kids to play.
Are you saying that this and this have already been sold?
Those have all been split off.
Recently, because it's still showing that Temple Hill owns that whole thing?
Yeah, it is split, and it's just like this one. So see how this one is combined? And just so you know, this is all one, so you're only coming to here.
It's just this piece?
It's just that size, right there.
Not this long?
Yeah. Yeah, so sorry. But yeah, on RGIS, it still shows as this being blocked.
I see. Got it.
Yeah, so you're one block up.
Oh, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes, thanks for the clarity.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the requested land division for 1601 West Division Street as presented.
Support. Fosher.
Mayor, yep, got it. Oh, sorry, I interrupted. Fosher.
Yes or no?
Bunts.
Fent.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Bauman.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
We have another new business, new business B.
Yeah, so another land division, this time for 775 East Division Street. Pictured here is an aerial of 775 East Division Street. For those of you that were on the commission roughly, probably six-ish months ago, you'll probably find the East Garfield Street lots a little familiar. So again, this request is set before the planning commission due to the subject parcels being located within a plat. The properties are zoned R2 with a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet and width of 75. So this one is a little tricky. So 775 East Division Street is technically non-conforming due to the lot exceeding the three to one ratio, and also the lot width not meeting the minimum lot size of 75 feet in width. It does meet the minimum lot size and square footage. So this division will actually make 775 East Division Street more conforming due to it no longer exceeding that three to one ratio. The division does not affect the width of the parcel, so that will maintain at the 59.75 feet in width. However, the length will be cut down to 204 feet approximately. And then the transfer parcel will be roughly 6,000 square feet in size with that 59 feet in width and 102 in length. Pictured here is the parent parcel in red, the transfer parcel in that teal color, which will be combined with the Habitat owned property because the transfer parcel on its own would not meet the minimum lot size requirements. So, and this lot split will also allow for easier access onto that East Garfield Street lot due to the topography in that area. They're hoping to build a house on that property, and having the entrance off Carmel Street will be a lot easier for that parcel. So stated here-
No more slope driveways?
Yeah, right. The new property descriptions for both 775 and the East Garfield Street lot. And staff supports this lot split due to the fact that 775 East Division will be more conforming in nature, and the transfer parcel will be combined with that adjoining East Garfield Street lot. So the recommendation would be to consider approving the requested land division for 775 East Division Street as presented.
Is Habitat still planning and putting two homes in that area?
Yes, so Amy or Todd, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Planning Commission. I'm Amy Gibbs from Cadillac Area Habitat for Humanity. I also have with me Todd Winkle. He is on my planning commission and board, so if you should have any questions for him as well. We, at this point, are getting the lot ready for us to make a decision. We have not decided if we're going to do one or two houses on that. If we do one, we will come back to you guys and ask for those all to be combined. But at this point, we are looking to do two houses. We do understand that we will, if we do two, we will have to do the driveway on the farthest-
Mm-hmm.
East.
West.
West lot in that hill, so we'll have to trench that out and do that. But making it much easier for us to do the sewer and water hookups from Carmel Street onto those lots is what we are looking at. That's why we wanted to acquire this corner lot as well.
Yeah, see, I didn't know if you were going to have a big driveway, house, house.
Yeah. We were told that they don't like to do a shared driveway, so we aren't 100% sure yet. We are not building this year on that, so we just wanted to get it ready for us to be able to move forward at a later date.
Got you. Any questions for it?
Yeah, if, so if you already own the larger parcel off from Garfield, correct?
Correct.
So we would add to that parcel split, add two?
Correct, that is our request, and that's what we have put into the city.
If you were to build, that would be large enough, this is probably a question for Danielle, then that would be large enough to split, once it's combined, then to split if, and have two separate parcels?
I'd have to look at the measurements, but-
Didn't we already split it?
No, so I think the second, they're thinking of the second lot.
Yeah, so we-
So they own this lot as well. So I'm not sure if you were, if you were at the meeting where this was one whole lot, and they asked to split this lot in half, creating two lots.
Oh, okay, so it's not showing on Wexford?
Yeah, see, it is, yeah.
Okay.
So this is split into two, and then now they would like to combine, well, they're asking for this to be split, and then administratively, we would combine this with this for one. So they essentially would have two lots, with this one having access this way and this one having access off of Garfield. There used to be a vacant alley running through here, but it's since been vacated.
Okay, and the lot without being combined would not be, would not be big enough to be-
Yeah, this transfer parcel would not meet, no. And actually, bef, before Habitat approached this homeowner, about a year ago, this homeowner came in asking if she could sell that back half because they don't use it. And I said, unfortunately, it doesn't meet minimum lot standards. However, you could always reach out to the adjoining property owner. If they're interested in more land, then they could be combined, but by itself, it would not be allowed.
So this will make otherwise not useful property useful?
Correct, and a non-conforming lot, more, more conforming, not quite-
Closer.
Yeah, definitely closer.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Just a question, Danielle, the split itself, to approve the land division in the motion, should probably also mention the recombination with the parcel to the west?
You certainly can. I have the applications on my desk for both, and I'm going to go ahead and do that. So combinations are approved administratively, but yes, you, as a planning commission, probably would not be in your best interest to, motion to approve a lot split that would not- motion to approve a lot split that would not be conforming on its own, so yes.
Unless we wanted to just hang our neck completely?
I mean, the options are out there.
Let me recommend against that.
Any questions for this?
Yeah, because somebody might jump it off.
Everybody good with Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's Amy.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the requested land division for seven seven five East Division Street and its related recombination with the Habitat parcel to the west as presented by the Cadillac Area Habitat for Humanity.
I will support that.
You're allowed to support, so pick one.
Shippers?
Yes.
Post?
Yes.
Van Pelt?
Yes.
Bunce? Blasher?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Okay, old business.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, old business, nothing. Board member comments? Hope everybody had a great Easter.
I'd just like to say I'm glad to be back. This is, I started on the planning commission and this is always my favorite. So, and you guys do such a great job, so nice to be amongst you again.
Thank you.
Nice to have you.
We welcome you back, open hand, just because, you know, you loved us for bigger and better.
Oh, I wouldn't call it better.
This is a win-win.
Always. Yeah.
Uh, communications, I was a little amused by reading it, so.
Yeah, so it's just a comment that we received over the counter that she asked that it be given to planning commission and council. So that is why that is included for your information.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, having no more public, but public comment is open. I have none and no other business and nobody really cares.
I do have a question.
Yes, you're right, it's on him.
Nope, I do. Just clarification, uh, looking at this letter here, providing emergency housing, is that, is there any validity to that? If you wrote a letter, I want to at least acknowledge that we've looked at it and,
I don't think it's fair that the loft developers receive property tax reimbursement for providing emergency housing. So unsure the content, context of this, but maybe she's referring to the fact that we're in a housing crisis? But I am, I'm unsure what the,
The lofts is not providing any emergency,
No.
Housing.
No, I would say that they are adding to a housing cri, like remedying a housing crisis that we currently have, but yes, it would not be emergency housing.
Okay.
Go ahead. Move to adjourn.
No, I got a question for you.
Sorry.
I gotta keep talking till seven at least. My question is, if Mr. Wallace is retiring tomorrow, who is replacing him?
Do you want you to answer that?
Uh, undetermined at this point in time. We started about a month or so ago to fi, you know, file advertising to replace my position. And the first go around on the ads did not produce hardly any candidates and certainly none that fulfilled most of the requirements for the, for the job. We have since gone out on a second posting and I'm not sure how many we've received to date, but I think there's at least maybe two more applications, maybe three that they're anticipating may come in with people with, I don't know if it meets all the credentials, but at least much closer to meeting the credentials than before. We also have an RFP going out right now that's going out with the zoning ordinance completion work to get proposals to have people assist with the department operation on an ongoing consultation basis, should we have a gap to fill between the time, between now and the time that the new person would come on board. So that's kind of the plan moving forward.
And before I adjourn, I'll remind everyone that from eight thirty to eleven tomorrow, you can stop by and wish John happiness.
I'd just like to say how happy I've been to serve all you as advisor for ten years. It's, I think we've accomplished a, a lot in that time, a lot of projects both in downtown and outside downtown, so thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
We thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. I'll be gone, traveling for work tomorrow, so I won't be able to come, but I wish you the best.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
Yeah, leaves a big hole to fill.
Anybody else?
Yes, big shoes.
Everybody happy?
I'm happy now.
I'm happy as all get out, this was great.
We're out.
Thank you.